Would stand in this area, Mr. Longmire Heffey and anyone with Mr. Hobart Rice and his family that's here. We certainly appreciate y'all being here. I'll count the commissioner myself, we offer our condolences for your loss. And we wanted to make this special with this proclamation.
Whereas Hobart Rice has served the citizens and residents of Jefferson County, Tennessee with dedication and integrity. And whereas Hobart Rice served the Jefferson County Republican Party many years and in many capacities. He served as chairman and as a representative on the state Republican Executive Committee multiple times. And whereas Hobart Rice was not all about politics. He loved his family, his church, Wesley's Chapel United Methodist Church, where he served as life speaker. And whereas Hobart Rice represented the true volunteer spirit in his church, county, and state. He was always willing to help others as a leader or follower. Now therefore I, Mark Potts, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Jefferson County, express our deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of the late Hobart Rice and express our thanks for the many contributions he has made to Jefferson County. And in witness whereof, I have under two set my hand and call the seal of Jefferson County to be affixed this nineteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2020.
Thank you all so much. Next, we have a proclamation honoring Mr. W. B. Bud Watkins. You're all okay if you want to stay there. I know Mr. Watkins is familiar with this building and with this body as many years as he served. And we want to thank you for his service to Jefferson County as county commissioner. Mr. Hurd?
Whereas W. B. Bud Watkins served the residents of Jefferson County, Tennessee with dedication, integrity, and uncompromising principle. And whereas Bud Watkins represented District Nine of Jefferson County Commission for twenty-four years. He served diligently to promote the well-being and advancement during both difficult and good times. And whereas Bud Watkins not only loved his special family, but loved God and demonstrated his true Christian spirit by serving others. His front porch became a place of worship during the closures of churches. And whereas Bud Watkins was a farmer and always enjoyed being on one of his many tractors, hiking in the mountains, or just enjoying the beauty of Jefferson County. And whereas Bud Watkins is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service and greatly acknowledges the exemplary spirit, outstanding leadership, and commitment. And now therefore I, Mark Potts, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Jefferson County, express our deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of the late Bud Watkins and express our thanks for the many contributions he made to Jefferson County. And in witness whereof, I appear and too set my hand and call the seal of Jefferson County to be affixed this nineteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2020.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Charlie Williams.
All in person, Frank and I both worked EMS with Charlie Williams and all of our residents were special. But we spent a lot of time with Charlie. He was a teacher and mentor to us a lot of times. It is the most recent passing. We want to thank you family for everything Charlie did for Jefferson County.
Whereas W. Charles Charlie Williams, Training Center Coordinator with Jefferson County Emergency Medical Services, faithfully served residents of Jefferson County with dedication, professionalism, and integrity. And whereas Charlie Williams was instrumental in the teaching and training of countless students as an assistant professor of emergency medicine at Auburn State Community College, preparing them for a life of service to those in need. And whereas Charlie Williams not only dedicated his life to medical care, but to spiritual guidance as well. He served as pastor to Jones Chapel and Mulberry Gap United Methodist Churches. He was loved, respected, and admired by all whose lives he touched. And whereas Charlie Williams was a thirty-third degree mason and an initial member of the Holy Land Pilgrimage Endowment Fund. He helped to change lives and ministry of so many ministers that were able to take the Holy Land pilgrimages. And whereas Charlie Williams was loved by family and friends and lived a life in service to others and is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service. And now therefore I, Mark Potts, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Jefferson County, express our deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of the late Charlie Williams and express our thanks for the many contributions he has made to Jefferson County. And in witness whereof, I appear and too set my hand and call the seal of Jefferson County to be affixed this nineteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2020.
Thank you. We appreciate the service of everyone who's willing to serve Jefferson County. We want to honor those who have served us so well. And families, we just want to know we appreciate what they have done for us. Next item, on the agenda is approval of no reason bonds. Mr. Hurd should have received you with an updated list. We have a motion by Mr. Fagan, second by Mr. Kesterson. You may go ahead and proceed to vote.
Motion carries seventeen zero. These people are approved. Reports from elected officials, department heads, and others. You have a list of mayoral appointments. I will read them, and if you don't mind, we'll take those as a whole. Chad Carter and Joe Gibson for the E-911 Board. D. D. Whitaker, EMS. Heidi Thomas, Todd Kesterson, Jim Del Patterson. Charles Tipton, Sam Solomon for the Ethics Committee. John Bowden for the Jefferson Healthcare Foundation. Merle Jarnigan and Linda Franklin for the Nursing Home Board. Brian Morgan for Regional Plane Commission. Jonathan Mixon for Sanitation Commission and Solid Waste.
We have a motion by Mr. Low and a second by Mr. Reed. Y'all may vote. Passes seventeen to zero. You have reports in your packet. You have a report from our Mr. Poe, Court Clerk. You have a report from Frank Hurnan. You need to make notes that there's personnel. Policy amendment, also a policy amendment from Mr. Steiner and also from Jennifer Hall. These are not voting items, it's just FYI or information the county commission. They have to file that with the clerk in order to change anything from the employee handbook. That brings us to... Dr. Johnson, do you have anything to add to your report on the school?
Yes, sir, please. Only because I wasn't able to be here last week. Just real quick, just so in honor of the county commission's request, some things that I'm preparing and that will get to you in written form soon is a comparison on the building project to repair, reno, and then replace. That's been asked of us and we're working on that. In the report, you saw that the construction manager going to RFP. Those are due this Thursday, and then the committee will reduce that down to a number that the board will interview on November the fifth. Also, I'm going to prepare and give to you so that you all can see what the school board's been doing in terms of out of operating budget, already addressing things that the needs assessment has identified. And there's a phase, an operation upgrade, one and two, out of last year's budget money and this year's budgeted money, and those projects are underway. By the next time I see you or talk with you, we should know for sure. At the both bodies' request, really, our desire would be that a building, Jefferson Elementary, could fit on the existing tract of property. The Lewis Group is studying that and will be reporting to the school board at the end of this week with an update on that. And then also, we're studying the active enrollment at each school and availability at each school and the impact that that would have on each community and the impact this body would feel and the school board would feel in aligning that. So that'll all be one prepared document, and I will get to everyone just as quickly as possible. And then lastly in that, I know we're never at a shortage for rumors. I've kind of started a little list of rumors that we've heard or that you all have asked me about. And I'm going to have a fact versus rumor kind of checklist, just some things that, you know, if you hear that, now this is the reality and those things. So I just wanted to have that ready for you. But again, I have a work session with our board Thursday, and we'll vote most of that Thursday initially. And then we'll get a written report to this group as well, we'll be following that in the coming days.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next item, Resolution 2020-41, Surplus for Markets Garage. I have a motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Bale. No requests to speak. You may go ahead and vote. Passes seventeen zero. Next item, Resolution 2020-42, Surplus for Circuit Court. I have a motion by Mr. Coleman, second by Marcus Reed. Mr. Fagan, do you request to speak?
Is it possible to take Resolutions 2020-42 through 47 together as one?
If you so desire. Could we vote on this one and then do the rest?
Unless Mr. Coleman and Mr. Reed want to accept that as their amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to go through to 2020-47, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Not including 2020-48.
Correct.
So that will be 2042, Circuit Court, Sheriff's Department Office, and Agent Sheriff's Department and Sheriff's Office, all combined together.
Hold on. I don't want to, since I've already made the motion on this one, I don't want to be combined in the sheriff's because I'm going to stay with college on that.
Okay.
I think we need to go ahead with this one first.
Is that agreeable? All right, so we're going to vote on the surplus of a circuit court at this time. We have a motion and a second. No requests to speak. You may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Now, a motion could be in orders to do the combined of the rest two, 2048, 2020-48, whatever the player in the body is.
That motion is approved. Make sure you can get it on there. Can you not get it on there?
No, yeah, we can do it. Approved to where? Are you going to forty-three, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight?
No, not forty-eight. Yeah, it's two forty-seven.
So we're doing Resolution 2020-43, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven. We have a motion by Mr. Solomon and a second by Kagan. See, no requests to speak. Mr. Kesterson?
Only question I would have since there is, before surplusing these items, would there not be money coming back into the... Would you not have to do a roll call vote on each item since there is money involved? I guess I ask...
You do a roll call vote for voting on here. It counts as a roll call.
So you can combine them all without any problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
This suffices for a roll call vote.
Okay. I just didn't know if you could combine them all and do it that way.
Thank you. No other comments. You may proceed to vote. Sixteen with one abstained, Mr. Coleman abstains. Passes. That brings us to Resolution 2020-48, Co-optive Purchasing Method. Mr. Coleman?
Just a quick question for the sheriff. I know it was back, and it was prior to your election, but we passed a policy that said that these surplus vehicles and stuff to be offered to other departments, if nobody wanted them. Or did you offer them yet?
Now, we haven't offered them. Two vehicles in question, one of them is with mechanical problems.
Okay.
And I don't think that...
I just know that we had a policy that said that any of that is to be offered. But if they've got problems, well...
Yeah, and one of them was a drag forfeiture, which got awarded to the county that we had to surplus, so.
So that brings us to Resolution 2020-48. Co-optive Purchasing Method. Motion and a second will be in order. I have a motion by Mr. Fagan, second by Mr. Bird, request to speak. See, none. You may proceed to vote. Resolution passes seventeen to zero. Next item. This reports of committees, boards, and commissioners. So you have a copy of your August financials that you're having to look over, and that brings us to county amendments. Fund 101, number six, that's items one through six on that sheet. A motion to approve will be in order. Motion by Mr. Seal, second by Katie Fager. No requests to speak. You all may proceed to vote. John Neal, go ahead, sorry.
You don't need a... I mean, you need one through the computer. They come from a committee, so you don't actually have to have.
Okay.
This one does affect fund balance.
Passes seventeen zero. Fund 101, number seven, also comes from the Budget Committee and does not need a motion or a second. We may have to get one to go through.
Does it? Do they all have it? Is it the raises?
Mm-hmm.
Does everybody have a copy of it?
Okay. Yeah, they were sent out. You should have gotten an email from Mr. Douglas, doesn't have his iPad, so he may not have it.
This... Wait a minute, who's the right to speak about it?
Gone. Now you're raising your hand.
Can I raise my hand or better?
You certainly can.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Help me out here, Commissioner Starwood. Because I don't have my iPad and I don't have all this in front of me.
All right, what do you need to know?
We are voting on three percent retroactive rates for county employees.
Yes, three percent. Takes in, like the sheriff, part-time folks, the bailiffs, the people that work part-time over there, EMS. All that, they've got to have been working one year by July one. And the recommendation of the Budget Committee was that we allow Mr. Langman to figure out how to disperse retroactive back to July one.
And this was a total cost of, was it four hundred and five?
It was just a little under four hundred and five when Mr. Langman figured it out. It's four oh three or something like that, but it's just a little under four hundred and five thousand. And it's coming from the fund balance this year. And it's basically, each percentage is... It's just about what a penny is on a hundred and thirty-five thousand percentage.
A hundred and thirty-five thousand per percent.
Per percent.
And a penny is, what, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifty-six?
No, it's a hundred and thirty-six or somewhere, a hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and thirty-seven, something like that.
Here's my concern on this. We've got money to do this this year. This, I mean, we can do this this year, but we are tying ourselves in to next year. And, I mean, we still don't know what's coming. I mean, I'm hearing stories that November, December, and January are going to be rough. And I don't know if I'll even get a second on this, but I would... Now, this is splitting hairs, I know. But, and I'm not going to be very popular over something, you've got to do what you've got to do sometimes. I would like to amend the motion to a two percent raise.
Have a motion to amend from three percent to a two percent raise. We have a second. Hit motion to amend on your device, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'll get some motion and write speak.
All right. So there's a motion to amend there from Mr. Douglas. Motion dies for lack of say. No, we've got a second. John Neal's called. Motion second, discussion. Todd Kesterson.
I just was wanting to know, and I'm addressing this to you, John Neal, if there's ever been any discussion about benefits, health insurance. Those, because those continually go up, and I know we've all spoke about that, serving on the Budget Committee. But has that ever been addressed as far as the rate that's going up?
It, our medical cost amounted to, it was booked at five percent. It came in like four little, four point something, which amounted to one point three pre-tax dollar raise for county employees. So it was about one point three pre-tax, which is after tax, fair or after tax dollars, it'd be about one and a half. So what we said in the Budget Committee was that we've already got it booked this year. We've got it paid for this year, but we will be taking that up in the Budget Committee prior to next year's budget to determine, is it going to be a... Are we going to keep going, eating all of the health insurance? Is it going to be a, when we give raises and increases now, is it going to be on total compensation? Is it going to be something that they'll, are they going to have to pay more for health or not? That discussion we're going to have, it's on the agenda to have that discussion when we start the budget. Mr. Kesterson?
Thank you. Mr. Doctor?
When it comes to employee pay raises, it's always hard for me to know what the right thing to do is because I believe the market drives the pay. In other words, we have to compete with neighboring counties to hire and retain the kind of people we want. And the only way I know to do that is a lot of businesses do is a market survey. And I don't know, it's probably been years and years since one's done. But at the end of the day, for me, in order to be fair to the employees and to be fair to the taxpayers who are paying it, we need to know what the market demands in order to get and retain the people we need. And I think it should be looked at as a total compensation package, which includes hourly rate, the insurance cost, if there's longevity pay. It all rolls into it because every county may do things different as far as they pay more for insurance than other counties, but less on the hour. But at the end of the day, and in this year, I honestly believe that there's ever a time to do as much as we can for the employees in a year where we have this virus and we have emergency people interacting with it on a routine basis. We have county employees staffing offices, doing their job for the public. So I just think there's ever a time to do as much as we can for employees. This is the year to do it, and I'm favored with three percent.
Mr. Fagan?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'd like to echo basically everything that the doctor said, but I also want clarification, I guess, to be directed to the Senate Chairman. You mentioned something about nearly four hundred thousand dollars. Are you taking into account all of the amendments associated with this? Because Amendment Seven is three hundred, listing the document I have, three hundred and ten thousand eight nine.
I've not got the thing laying here. All I was giving my cheat sheet, Mr. Fagan, and it was a, when it's talking about the Budget Committee, about a hundred and thirty-five thousand eight. It came out a little less than four oh five, which is a three percent times one thirty, three times one thirty-five. But it could be three ninety-eight or whatever.
There's other funds involved other than 101?
So are we only doing Amendment Seven now, or are we doing all of the amendments related to pay increase?
They're all broken out through your budget amendment process.
That's what I'm asking. What are we voting on right now? Only the one?
Only 101.
For three hundred and ten thousand eight nine.
So you'll have 911 and all the others will be in addition to that?
Yeah, my name's office broke them out by funds.
Okay, if we got the budget amendments on those.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So I'll wait till we deal with this amendment and then I'll...
Mr. Low?
The majority, I think, of our employees have probably paid family plan, which the county doesn't cover, which is probably going up three or four percent every year as well that the employee has to incur.
No, we're eating the increase on it. We eat the increase on it. It went up, the average went up. It was booked at five in the budget you all passed, but it was just a little less, it's four point something. But we took, we eat all the increase in that. That's where it comes, it come out to about four hundred and fifty dollars per employee that it went up.
So what I'm saying though is a family, we pay in employees.
We pay one hundred percent of same employee.
Right, I'm talking about the family plan.
And we pay a percentage of the family plan, so we, but we're eating the increase though. In other words, if you pay, say, five hundred and ten dollars, the way I understand it, if it, when it went up to four percent, you're still paying five hundred and ten dollars on the family. Is that not right? Okay, so it went up, okay. I stand corrected.
Mr. Hurd said his way though.
Okay.
Frank said his way though.
All right. I knew we played a hurt percent, and I did not know that it went up. I stand corrected on that one.
Craig Bird?
Okay, here's my thing. When we proposed this in the Budget Committee, I still, I've got a pretty good memory. We voted a two percent raise, and I'm not chastising the school board, I thank them, I appreciate it, but we voted two percent raise to the school board. And no one complained, no one fussed. And you're talking about the rest of county employees at three percent, which... And I know our insurance went up two percent, which we didn't get raised in Superior County. So I don't understand why we're really fussing about this when you voted a two percent raise for the school board, but for the rest of county employees, nothing? Our two percent? I mean, let's quit splitting hairs. I mean, like I said, these people have had an insurance increase. What about cost of living? If I understood it right, they did not get much of a raise last year. That's the reason why they were pushing for one this year.
Got two point five, two point five last year.
Okay, I told you they didn't get much of a raise last year.
They got two point five plus, uh, insurance increases and CPI was two. I believe CPI is two, and it's one point three this year. So CPI increase is about the same thing as what the insurance went up this time. The cost of living was covered in the insurance.
Mr. Fagin.
I'd just like to say I support what Terry says, and Jimmy said this in our budget meeting. It's hard to find any good employees that wanna work, that show up every day, and our county is filled with them. And so I really, I support the three percent, and I appreciate how everybody's come through this COVID situation. The department said, said they have a complaint, they've been there, and I really appreciate it.
So that brings us to the amendment, to the motion.
Can I, one thing, your bar is, can I?
You can raise it, yeah.
You know, I, I, I understand what everybody here is saying. My wife is an employee at City of Gatlinburg this year. She's been there, going on five years. City Gatlinburg employees got nothing for a pay increase this year. And everybody knows that I'm, it's hard to squeeze money out of me, whether it's my money or public money, doesn't matter. Take care of it, it's fine. And I appreciate the job everybody does, but I'm telling you, there's some taxpayers in this county that are hurting. They've lost jobs, they've had pay decreases. If your salesman working on commission right now, which I was before I got laid off, you know, there's two sides to this coin, and I'm, I'm trying to just look at the people that are paying the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins. So we're voting on the amendment. The original motion is a three percent raise. The amendment is to lower it to a two percent raise. We've had discussion, that motion is second. You may go ahead and vote. If you vote yes, you're voting for a two percent increase and to go back from the three percent discussion.
It's not, I've not got a yes or a no on my screen.
Uh, it changed, it changed vote.
Amendment fails, eleven fold. We're back to the regional general fund. Frank needs a second to give second, you know, that's what I understood. Then you said give me a second. All right, we're back to, question amendment one oh one seven, item one. This is a three percent increase recommended from the budget committee, there's no motion in second. Uh, this is the employees number one oh one, fund balance, not all the others, but go ahead. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Fagin. We don't need a motion, but your request to speak, sorry.
Well, I'm trying to make the motion to amend.
Okay.
Because I'd like to take up all of the, uh, raise-related amendments together.
All the funds combined for all employees?
Yeah.
We probably ain't keep them separate since they are different funds and you're crossing them. It'd be a little cleaner if you had them, each one in the fund.
Unless somebody on the bottom of the jet, I don't know why you need to do that. My, I keep it in the cleaner.
Well, you, you've got some on here that can or cannot vote depending on, like, they pop, so they have to...
Two of us, yeah.
So they can vote on part of it, but can't vote on the other. Does that make sense?
It does.
All right.
We have a motion to amend, we have a second. You withdraw them?
I withdraw.
Okay, so we're back to the regional one oh one amendment seven. This is for a three percent increase. On just on one oh one funding employees at this time. Hearing no discussion, you may proceed to vote. Fourteen of one, with two abstaining, motion passes. That brings us to fund one oh one number eight, that does need a motion and a second because we suspended the rules. This is a tourism carry grant, money has to be spent within the... We have a motion by, a motion to amend?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right. Motion by Mr. Seals, second by, by Mr. Fagin. Request to speak, discussion. Hearing none, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. That brings us to one sixteen one. This is a recommendation from the budget committee. This is also part of the three percent. This is for the sanitation. Motion by Mr. Seals, second by Mr. Bird. Seeing no request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Passes sixteen to one. Next item is one sixteen, amendment two. Sanitation fund. Is that, is that the grant, David? Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay.
This is a grant that we talked about in Mark's, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Collins has to speak to this motion.
So last week we talked, some of y'all, one in the budget committee, I don't want to talk about it much in the whole body, but it's a, um, a grant to try to minimize pollution, polluting vehicles. Um, so we do qualify for a seventy-five percent reimbursement, but each individual, uh, grant will be weighted based on priority. Diesel, diesel conversion, which is what we're looking to do, would be the least priority. Uh, all electric or, um, natural gas or hybrid, or all, all those others will have higher weighting in it. So although we, we, we qualify for seventy-five percent, it may not come back to seventy-five percent. If it does not come back to seventy-five percent, we just won't accept the, the grant, or we won't sign the grant to accept it. But come, so we're gonna go ahead and apply and go through all the process and see what they offer.
Seeing no request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Next item. Highway Fund one thirty-one, amendment two. Motion by Mr. Seals, second by Mr. Bird. Seeing no request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Highway Fund one thirty-one, amendment number three. This is three percent increase for the highway employees. Motion by Mr. Seals, second by Mr. Coleman. Seeing no request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Sixteen to one passes. Next item is, uh, Capital Projects Fund one eighty-nine, amendment two. Motion by Mr. Scarlett, second by Mr. Bird. Seeing no request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Next one is Landfield Fund two oh seven, amendment one. This is another in the line of three percent increases. Motion by Mr. Reed, second by Mr. Coleman. No request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Passes sixteen to one. That brings us to, uh, school amendments. Fund one forty-one, amendment number four. Motion by Mr. Seals, second by Mr. Bird. No request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. One forty-one, motion amendment number five. May go ahead and vote. Passes seventeen zero. Budget amendment number six. Comes from the budget committee, there's no motion or second, but we'll take it, we'll give it. May proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Fund one forty-three, budget amendment number two. Needs no motion or second. Seeing no request to speak, you may proceed to vote. General Purpose Fund, pass, uh, wait. Passes seventeen zero. Uh, General Purpose Fund one seventy-seven, budget amendment one, comes from the budget committee, does not need a motion or a second. Looking for request to speak. Seeing none, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Now comes the nominating committee, and, uh, Mr. Testerson, congratulations, new chair of nominating committee, uh, Flores Givers.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we, we met an elected officers. Uh, I was elected chairman, uh, vice chair was Commissioner Bales, and secretary was Mr. Fagin. There's several different committees and that, uh, that we need to address tonight. Probably the one that would be the simplest to start with would be those committees that, uh, were, were nominating citizens, and I don't know what would be the proper procedure. Y'all would like to take these individually or, uh, take, take some of them as a, as a group? Would you like them individually, group? Group, okay. The as far as nominations for the ag extension, uh, Terry Dockery and Jim Snodgrass were nominated and recommended, uh, to you all for the commissioners. Uh, Brian Morgan and Annette Stukesbury were recommended as the citizens for that, uh, committee. Animal Control Oversight, uh, Kim Allen. Building Inspection Oversight, uh, the licensed building, building contractor was Kenny Carr. Uh, the certified home inspectors was Steve Motrick and Mike Dockery. Uh, Conservation, uh, recommendation is Jason McCoy to replace David Swan's term.
Are you gonna do that separate than the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. So the list on the page that's partially typed and handwritten, is the one you're looking at? I think that's one Mr. Fagin handed out.
Read handed that out, I handed that out.
Okay. So this is the one with ag, ag extension, animal control, building inspection, life and, uh, conservation. And we have a motion by, comes from the committee's recommendation, but we have a motion and second anyway. Any other nomination or request to speak? Hearing none, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Mr. Testerson.
The other committees that, uh, are, are made up of commissioners, do you want to take those, uh, as a group? Or do you want to take those, uh, committees individually in case there's some nominations to come from the board? The Conservation Committee, recommendation is Randy Bales. Facilities Committee, uh, Michael Fagin, Jim Snodgrass, Greg Bird, Terry Dockery, Katie Huffaker. Finance Committee, Katie Huffaker, Jim Snodgrass, Greg Bird, and Marcus Reed. Personnel Committee, Ronnie Coleman, Paul Lowe, Randy Bales, Terry Dockery, and Marcus Reed. Public Service Committee, Greg Bird, Marcus Reed, Ronnie Coleman, Sammy Solomon, and Paul Lowe.
That comes as a recommendation from the nominating committee, there's no motion or second. Any other nominations from the floor, our request is speed. Seeing none, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That brings us down to the libraries. Libraries submitted their own nomination. I sent a packet, in your packet, they recommend Jennifer Stom King Stewart for the regional board position. And that will expire in June of twenty twenty-two. It just comes to check the mission for approval from the Jefferson County Library Board. Motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Tim Seals. I'll favor go ahead and vote. Seventeen zero. Next item, Resolution twenty, twenty dash forty-four. This is a initial resolution on the nursing home. I don't know what the chair or the mayor won, but did I skip one? Constable actions, sorry. Back up, get the constable actions. We have a open for the cu- constable, Mr. Hearn, who all has qualified?
Mr. Hager's the only, only one that submitted that you got.
Well, you have one after David and Mr. Hager, who, uh, you recently appointed in July, but the term ended, so that would be a, that's the only person that has qualified. So a motion in order to make Mr. Hager the constable. Testerson, we're all leaving second. Any other nominations? Hearing none, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero, congratulations, sir. About skipping, maybe Frank, you probably won't be a constable in January. Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-four. This is a nursing home, and as chairman, I won't blame it on the mayor, the mayor did not get this out to, or to the chairman in time. It's an initial resolution, has to be advertised for twenty days. We advertised it, but we didn't vote on it before, so we'll have to do that again. The bond's going through, it's just, uh, when they recently told me, they said we need a resolution singular and, and resolutions. So I apologize for any inconvenience, but, uh, Mr. Gibson would, uh, come and call pretty quick. So a motion by Mr. Coleman, second by Sammy Solomon, request to speak, seeing none, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-nine. As you are aware, this year for the first time, we received a five hundred thousand dollar home rehab grant. This is the policies and procedure and income guidelines that's in your packet that has, must be followed in order to do that. I would ask that you help get the word out to people who need rehab with their home, we need people to apply. Sometimes we have trouble actually speeding... Sometimes we have trouble actually spending that amount of money with qualified people, so you can help get the word out. There's a public meeting coming up, um, October the twenty-sixth at five thirty here in the courthouse, so invite people coming there. We have a motion by Mr. Bird, a second by Mr. Reed, seeing no request to speak, may go ahead and vote. Passes seventeen zero. Next, resolution twenty twenty dash fifty. Uh, this resolution request to say Tennessee General Assembly, take action to protect the health, safety, and property rights of citizens relative to five G small cell support structure development. Mr. Kestner saying that, uh, Ms. Huffaker have sponsored this, so it does not need a motion and a second. We have them anyway. Seeing no request to speak, you may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Next item comes as a request from Granger County, uh, Commission, uh, came from the mayor of Granger County, let me say. It's a resolution request for state officials to add outboard motor repair to the Tennessee College of Applied Technology curriculum, that's resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-one. Take how important it is, Lauren Hurd, Lauren Tourism Director, hosted two bass tournaments on both lakes this weekend, so surely something tore up, we need somebody here that can fix it. That was a motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Randy Bales. Any request to speak?
Fifty-one's meat processing, right?
Fifty-two, we switched and you may not have got, uh...
But what we're voting on says something here, fifty-one.
Yeah. We're voting on fifty-one, that's the outboard. Uh, I sent two copies of fifty-two out, I'll dress it.
I've got the wrong with Jan and then...
Okay. Sorry. We have a motion and a second, outboard motor train, may proceed to vote. Passes seventeen zero. Now, uh, there was some confusion on the general agenda, I blame that on the mayor too. So, uh, twenty twenty fifty-two A and B, uh, David Seal contacted me. We do have a meat processing plant that's coming in from the county. We need to strengthen that language up a little bit, so we have, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-two B and that's directly related to Jefferson County. Uh, want to give you the option since I were in work session, we saw twenty twenty fifty-two, which is version A. But fifty-two strengthens the language and helps support meat processing in our county. So a motion to approve with B in order. Our fifty-two A or B, you take your pick. A motion.
So did our, uh, suspension of the rules earlier cover this, or do you need a motion to suspend?
I have to ask parliamentarian. We need to suspend the rules since I were looking at B instead of A?
Yes.
Okay. So, have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. So that brings us to fifty, so we can do fifty-two B.
If you so desire.
Motion by Mr. Bird. Resolution twenty fifty-two A or B, sir?
B.
B, thank you. Second by Mr. Fagan. Motion to amend by Mr. Reed.
Just, uh, I'd like to recommend maybe a little touch up with the administrative. If you look down after number four, whereas, it goes to war case. I recommend that we highlight all caps, all the whereas. And then I'd like, uh, to, for the flow, move section one down underneath there, now therefore be it resolved. Those were recommended also by Mr. Seals.
Okay. So a motion to amend to do those corrections?
Yes, sir.
Have a second, I mean, in discussion. All in favor to amend, go ahead and vote. Uh, Frank said aye, I'm gonna say aye. Can we devote a full spoken? Done. Can you count marbles? Heidi Thomas?
Miss Tate.
Miss Tate, alright. So we have a motion to amend to make the whereas match, bold caps, move section one under the now therefore. That motion second, no other discussion, you may proceed to vote on the amendment. As a minute. Alright, it passed seventeen zero. That puts us back to the original resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-two B. Have a motion and a second. Anybody request to speak or any other amendments? Tom Neil's called.
What?
You're a man.
I did not, did not mean to.
Alright. Oh, we just thought before anybody else makes...
Got too many buttons on his thing.
Passes seventeen zero. Oh, hey. Sorry.
Got a question. Maybe I just missed it in my pack on my email, but I did not see...
I couldn't imagine that, but go ahead.
I did not see a quarterly report from the Boys and Girls and from, uh, Care.
We did not receive.
Their, uh, to get their terms of their agreement is if they report quarterly.
I understand, I will relay that message.
Care, they didn't have a lot of stuff flipped off of this lady.
Both... Both entities have had a change in their CEO and may not be aware of it, but I will follow up. And if I can get a report from both of those, I will forward it to you and we can ask them for a report immediately.
Mayor, I've got earlier appropriate time, but when, when we meet again in January, I think it'll be eighteen months since the commission set aside money for another, an additional ambulance for the county, so if, if Brad or whomever in January could give us an update on the progress we've made towards adding that ambulance, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And we can send it to you, sir, if, if he wants to report and send it there.
January's fine for me, but...
Alright, thank you, sir. Uh, briefly on announcements, uh, help, help us get the word out on home rehab. We have people in our county that are less fortunate than others and winters coming on and I'd really like to help as many people as we can. I mean, we have no matching money in this and we need, I want to get every dollar they will give us to help everybody in the county that we can. So, also the ground break at Jefferson Park, it's October the twenty-ninth at, uh, four o'clock. And so, our next quarterly commission meeting will be January the eleventh. The budget meeting will be at five thirty on January the eleventh. The next voting meeting will be on January nineteenth. A motion to adjourn will be in order and we will have their board immediately follow. Motion by Mr. Coleman, second by Sammy Solomon. You may go ahead and vote, but I'm gonna say we are adjourned.